Madam President and trustees, for us, it's summer all year round because we not only do the summer sessions, but then we immediately reflect on that, start school, and then start planning for the next summer. So I'm delighted to bring two of our team members forward, and we'll be sharing a little bit about, first of all, summer learning. That's Ms. Dawn Lindon. And then secondly, Ms. Jenna Bakalor will follow up with summer enrichment. So we really have both sides of the coin, learning and enrichment. Trustees, you're aware that several years ago, we made a very intentional and quite frankly, an equity-based decision to really focus our summer efforts around those students who have demonstrated need. So you will see the common pattern throughout all of our summer programming. Most all of it is around students who may be second language students, students who perhaps have fallen behind in their learning, students who may be served on an IEP, Special Education Services. We really are working to serve our students and communities with the greatest need. And we all know that those are the students who suffer most from that summer learning hiatus. So we want to focus our programming there. So in the old before times, anyone could sign up and have their summer programming, but we are really now very intentional and strategic and focused. Now, the exception to that is high school and students who are getting their high school summer credits. That, of course, is open for everyone. Very good. Ms. Lindon?
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here, Trustees Superintendent Swift. I am joined tonight by Dr. Mary Ann Fadishen, our Executive Director at the Office of Special Education. And also joining us in just a moment via Zoom is Executive Director Kevin Carr and our English Learner Coordinator, Hudda Harajli. And the four of us are going to walk through a brief overview of our summer programming. So it's our pleasure to be here with you tonight. In just one moment, we'll have our deck ready to rock. But while Andrew is bringing that up, I will just share that we're thrilled to be here tonight because while Dr. Swift is absolutely right, we're focusing our intentions this summer on the students who need this time academically, they are expansive. And so you will see lots and lots of options and opportunities available to our students. We've worked really, really hard so that we can serve as many as possible and most of our students who need us. Okay? So they're carefully planned, and we're going to move right on to the next slide. Kevin Carr and Hudda Harajli, would you like to say hello?
Go right ahead, Hudda.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good to see you both.
Good to see everybody.
All right. So in just a minute, we'll go over each of the programs, but there are some common themes across the programming. We wanted to make sure that you were aware of. First of all, these are focused and purposeful. So every ounce of funding and time and energy of staff and students is put to really good use. The programs, while they are focused on learning gaps and accelerating growth, they're also really centered on joy and belonging and connection. And so those are very intentional elements of the design. We would be remiss if we didn't thank our AAPS teachers because while they work very hard throughout the school year, a high number of our AAPS teachers continue on with us in the summer programming, and we're really, really grateful. We are blessed because in our district, our summer programs are staffed by our AAPS highly qualified teams. These are equity-centered programs, and they're really focused on intensive outreach. So our job here is to make sure that every single student who qualifies for the program has a personal touch, and we do everything we can to get our students to engage and participate. So next, you're going to see a quick overview of the three levels. We will talk about an elementary program called Summer Learning Institute. We will talk about our middle school program, the Middle School Summer Challenge, and we will talk about the high school programming, of which there are quite a few separate components. In the next slide, you're going to see the special programs overview. So we do offer some very exciting redesigned special education programs this summer. We offer some really targeted and impressive English learner programs, and we also continue to offer the summer music program. So we'll touch on that briefly through the presentation as well. And I'm going to hand this off to Mr. Kevin Carr.
And as we go into that next slide, we're going to be introducing to you a number of really talented educators who are stepping up this summer to be our summer leadership team. On the left-hand side, you see our elementary leadership team with Tracy Stevenson, Patrick White, Sarah Karas. Moving to the right, the secondary leadership team with Michael Somerton, Amina Allen, Keisha Shanti Wilson, Stefan Hogan, Ryan Supall, and then our special program leadership team, just there at the bottom of the screen, Sue Zehall, Jaron Bryan, and Brittany Sales. We're really excited to announce this group as the leadership team that will be overseeing the day-to-day operations of our summer programs. Moving on, we're going to jump right into the elementary programming. Elementary Summer Learning Institute, otherwise known as SLI, has been a long-running and successful program in the Ann Arbor Public Schools. Students who participate in this are current kindergarten, first, second, third, and fourth grade students, and they arrive at that summer program by invitation based on their needs, just as Dr. Swift was bringing up in the introduction. It's going to be in two locations this year, both at King and Mitchell. We are expanding it in terms of capacity from the previous summers, and we're offering some family flexibility. There's two different sessions, an A session earlier in the summer and a B session later in the summer. It's a Monday through Friday program all day long. Breakfast, lunch, snacks, transportation provided along with that great targeted instruction that's really engaging. Some photos, and moving on, some photos that give you kind of a snapshot into what Summer Learning Institute might look like and feel like are these photos that have been taken from past programs. And so you can see small group instruction. You can see engaging collaboration with students, working together, independent work, and even some outside play learning connections in there. And then I'm passing it right back to Dawn. Oh, and actually, I'm passing it right to Ms. Harajli.
Thank you, Kevin. Good evening, trustees and Ann Arbor community. We are proud to share with you the expansion and enhancement of our summer English learner summer programs. Before we dive into our Summer ESL Academy, one important thing we'd like to share is that we have strategically scheduled Summer ESL Academy and EL Bridge to run first. So our English learners can access multiple summer programs they qualify for and not run into any scheduling conflicts. Summer ESL Academy has been expanded to be a K7 program to meet the needs of our newcomers. Previously, it was a 4th through 7th grade program. It will be held at Carpenter Elementary from June 20th to July 7th. It is from 8:30 to 12:30. Breakfast and lunch and snacks, as Mr. Carr reminded me, will be provided at Cessla as well. New this year is the integration of family workshops to support our newcomer, refugee, and immigrant families with academic, social resources, and strategies. And these workshops will be held at Cessla, further showing our commitment to whole child, whole community within the EL program at AAPS. EL Bridge was another existing AAPS summer program. We have expanded it to offer more spots for our 8th grade English learners who are transitioning to high school. In addition, we have allocated spots for our 9th to 11th grade refugees and recently arrived students. It is intended to help our English learners transition to high school, and our EL Bridge principal, Dr. Amina Allen, is scheduling field trips to the comprehensive high schools for our EL students, where they will engage with peer mentors as they begin their journey towards success in high school and post-secondary. And I'm sending it back to you, Kevin, for ASLA.
Thank you.
You know, may I interrupt very briefly? Hudda, would you like to put in a plug for the newcomer fair before we leave?
Yes, always ready. On May 16th, Ann Arbor community members and families are invited to the AAPS Newcomer Fair at Pioneer High School from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. Transportation will be provided for families, free food, resources, and academic materials as well. The flyer is available and posted on the AAPS EL Program website. We hope to see you there for our Fourth Annual Newcomer Fair.
Thank you very much, Hudda. And for those who don't know, Hudda, could you tell everyone what a newcomer definition is?
Absolutely. Newcomers are defined as students in their first 30 months of U.S. schooling, recently arrived. In a legal sense, they are also known as immigrant students and families. We refer to them as newcomer students and families in the Ann Arbor Public Schools.
Thank you, guys. I'm going to step in there and just thank you, Ms. Harajli, for doing the work here, and Ms. Lindon and the team. We're also delighted that they've allowed us to place that as one of our listen and learn stops, and I'm humbled and really grateful to get to join in in that way at that event this year. So thank you.
Thank you. You can take it away, Mr. Carr.
Thank you. You heard Hudda bring up that both Cessla and EL Bridge were strategically situated at the very beginning of the summer so that students could participate in those and then participate in subsequent summer programming. Similarly, Scarlet Learning Academy is positioned in the same way. It is an invitation program that focuses on math and literacy, and it is for Scarlet students, our only Title I middle school in the district. And so this year, that's going to be housed actually just across the parking lot at Mitchell Elementary, and students are going to be participating again in the beginning of the summer, all-day program, all-inclusive, and they're going to be working under the leadership of Mr. Ryan Supall. So that's going to be a really good continuing program available to students this summer from Scarlet.
Thank you very much. We'll move quickly through three slides about our Middle School Summer Challenge program. This is a unique program, really designed for our adolescent age group. So this is focused on enrichment with secreted inside foundational skill building. But kids are really engaged in project-based work through this program, and it's powerful. So you'll see this is a really popular program. It is one of those programs that is open and invitation. So it's a rare opportunity for adolescents, which is really important to connect over the summer. And we'll move on to the next slide, and you'll see a little more about this. But there's a STEM focus, there's a literacy and a math focus. It is being held at Pioneer High School. You'll see the dates here again, a couple of sessions so that families have some flexibility during the summer if they travel. It's a Monday through Thursday due to the 4th of July. We didn't want to lose that day, so there will be one Friday on the 7th where students will come to school. But we're psyched about that program. Lunch is provided, and it's a lot of fun. So trustees, you're more than welcome to attend any of these programs. Please stop by on any of the dates that we've shared with you. On the final slide for Middle Summer Challenge, the next one, you'll see there are two consecutive eight-day programs. So the students complete their projects during that period of time, and you'll see the grade levels here. So we'll move on to summer music. And the summer music program has been going on in our district for many, many years. It's a point of pride for us that we offer this opportunity for students, and pretty much any instrument that you play, there's a summer program available for you. It is a fee-based program, but it's important that our community knows there are scholarships available for students, and no student is ever turned away. That's a real value for us in the district. So we encourage folks to check that out. And then we're going to move into high school. So there's a lot going on at high school, lots of moving parts, but the High School Summer School Program, which is about credit recovery, is open to any student looking to recover credit. Again, a lot of outreach goes on here, so we don't leave this up to chance. And we want you to know that the credit recovery process doesn't start in the summer. It starts at the point of beginning failure in the course. So what students do is they work with their teachers and their counselors, and they have an individualized credit recovery plan created for them. So when students come to our credit recovery courses in the summer, they aren't retaking the entire course. They're focusing on the parts of the course that they did not master. And so that's how we do this most efficiently and also in a relevant way for our students. So it's been a really successful program. It usually serves about 400 students every year, and nearly 100% of students participating recover their credit in the program. So we're proud of it. You'll see the dates there. And I'm going to hand this back to Mr. Carr to talk about AYD.
Thank you, Dawn. We're going to talk about, in these next two slides, we're going to talk about two programs that are all about setting up current 8th grade students for success in high school. The first is Academic Youth Development, and this is all about math and getting ready for high school success in math and developing a math identity and a mindset that leads to success with all of the requirements of high school math. This is a program that runs in July. It's for identified 8th grade students, and we use academic and counselor recommendations for that. And then next, we're going to talk about the High School Transition Program again for current 8th grade students that are identified as having a history of academic challenges. This is all about let's get ready for high school, let's make sure that we put students and families in a situation where they get to know the environment, get to know people in the environment, and build relationships. So it does include a mentorship part that goes on for the four years of high school and connects with parents as well. And so that's going to be a program that runs in the end of June and beginning of July. It's a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday program that's sort of in the middle of the day there, late morning and afternoon, but another really important program for current 8th grade students as they're transitioning into high school. Both of these programs are meant to be early connections so that when kids get situated and feel comfortable in the environment, they're more likely to be successful in the subsequent work.
Thank you very much, Kevin. We'll talk briefly about our Pathways Summer Academy. So this program is unique. It's for current Pathway students only, and the desire for this program is to provide our 10th through 12th grade students with a summer experience that is really centered on extracurricular. So it's about character ed, it's about learning activities of interest to students, it's about bringing the fun and encouraging the connection. The broad goals are to assist students in building their sense of identity, and they do that through really powerful connections with really great teachers who are all about care and kids. And so we're really proud of that program, and that will continue to run. So any students who qualify are invited to that program. And then finally, we'll talk about SAT prep. This is an important topic for many families, and so we continue to offer this asynchronous option. Students can travel and participate in this preparation program. They also do have a connection with a mentor throughout the program. There are office hours where students can get assistance and support if they would like, but really want to emphasize this program is available yet again. And all of these programs can be found at A2schools.org/summer. So very easy to get to, and we'll share that site right before we end. As Dr. Swift mentions, we also have a very open A2 Virtual Summer Options Program for students. So if students are interested in taking a virtual course and they're taking a course that they took during the school year in an attempt to raise a grade perhaps, we again this year, we're happy to say, will be offering a reduction in cost for those students. So we want to support students who still continue to rebound from the COVID pandemic and the trauma, and we're excited to be able to offer that yet again this year. So we would encourage folks to reach out. There are virtual options available for all students, 612, many, many new courses, including a yoga course for those who just want to take an enrichment course this summer. So please reach out to the website at A2 Virtual Academy. And now, in this whirlwind overview of summer, I'm going to hand this off to Dr. Fadishen, and she's going to talk about special education programming.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lindon. Our special education summer opportunities, we have two very centered and focused programs for our students, and these are strictly for our students with IEPs. Our first is our longstanding Extended School Year, or ESY. Extended School Year services are for students who typically have more complex and intense needs, where it's required of them to participate in the summer to ensure that their retention rates and recoupment of their academics and academic skills stay on par. The other program is our Intensive Reading and Math Program, or as we affectionately known it as, IRAMP. And our IRAMP program is for our young fives to grade 12 program. They are intense reading and intense math programming for students. Both of these programs are criterion-based. So our Extended School Years for students who have been identified through their IEP as needing that Extended School Year. Our IRAMP students are students that have been referred to based upon very particular criteria data that tells us that the intensive nature and intensive need of both reading, literacy development, and math are what's going to help support them and build them, scaffold them, so that they can be better and more successful in the fall. Both our programs are intensive reading and math programs. Both programs, I should say, are running from both May, June 26th to July 27th. It is a Monday to Thursday program. For our Intensive Reading and Math Program, we have two times. There's an 8:30 to 9:30 or a 10:10 to 11:30 program that's allowing students to may actually participate in both programs rather than just one of the intensive reading or the intensive math. So allow students the opportunity to do either. For both of our programs, there is a parent orientation, and that will be the 21st of June from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. For Extended School Year, it's a 30 to 11:30 session. It's a five-week session, excuse me, Monday through Thursday. Again, our parent orientation is the 21st. And students will engage into this up to a half-day experience to receive the related services that will also support them in targeted learning activities and support their very specific IEP goals. Again, for Extended School Year, these are decisions that have been made for the students by their IEP teams, which of course include their parents, stating that these are the students that need the most intensive support throughout the summer to keep them on track so that they can be successful as they enter their new school year.
Thank you, Dr. Fadishen and trustees. That concludes our presentation tonight. I will just end yet again by thanking the many staff members and administrators who have committed to running these important summer learning programs. They truly are an incredible and dedicated and talented group of people who care deeply about our kids.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lindon and Dr. Fadishen.
We're happy to learn more now about the other side of the coin. I always tease and say it's always summer at Rec and Ed. They are the folks who, when everybody else goes on vacation, they go running in to schools and locations all over the district. Ms. Bakalor's going to share with us some highlights of what's coming up this summer at Rec and Ed.
Good evening, trustees. Great to see you. Good evening, Dr. Swift. Good evening to our community. It's really a pleasure to be here. I'm usually here once a year to talk about summer Rec and Ed programming. And I can't start the presentation without saying, we have a small and mighty team at Rec and Ed, and give them a shout out about summer camps. And that is Holly Klotz, Evan Grau, Yvette Harris, Susannah Brown, and Chris Drago as our marketing person. And this small team of people put together a humongous quality camp program. So let's go over what I'm going to talk about. And this is a pretty brief presentation, probably about 10 minutes. And in that time, I'll talk about our purpose, share some numbers with you, walk you through our different levels of camp, talk about our high school volunteer program, and how we attempt to make summer camps accessible to all. All right. So of course, we want summer camps to be fun. We all probably have great memories of spending time in a summer camp at some point in our childhood, and hopefully those are happy memories, fun times. But we also want to have a deeper level of positive impact on the children and older students who come into our camps. So we really think about this in four main categories. We want kids who come to our camps to have enhanced well-being. And what does that mean? It is that more whole-child approach. We're talking about physical health, social emotional health, having social experiences that are really positive, and learning, making new friends, getting along with other kids, et cetera. Another purpose we have is to ensure access. I'm going to talk a lot more about this in a few slides, so I'll hold on that for now. We also want to engage for growth, and that looks different across all of our different camps. We want kids to be able to be in a safe space and try something new. Try a new activity, try a new role in life. And I just wanted to say that this child in the picture for Engage for Growth was involved in our Biz Kids or Business Kids class or camp class summer. And all the campers developed a business plan and then presented their plan, and he took it very seriously and put on a blazer and a tie to present his business that week. Yeah, isn't he adorable? And by the way, all the pictures in the presentation are from Rec and Ed camps, mostly from last summer, but some from spring break camp too. And as you know, you've heard me here over the years, throughout everything we do at Rec and Ed, we are building community, from our youngest preschool campers and kids all the way through high school volunteers for summer camps. We are trying to build community through small group experiences, through families talking to each other when they're picking up their kids, even for our three-year-olds who are coming from a camp. They're building community themselves. So that is a constant through all of our camps. All right, now let's do by the numbers. Thank you. So as Dr. Swift mentioned earlier, we start that Monday after school gets out, and we go all the way to the end of the summer. And so parents can count on us to have, I think we have at least one full day camp all summer long. And in some weeks, it's many full-day camps. We also have half-day camps. This summer, we are offering a total of 186 camps. And when you think about the few names that I mentioned at the beginning and the number of camps, you get some idea of the work involved in the many months that go into planning this program. And this is actually about 30 more camps than we offered last year. And they're a mixture of full day, half day, and I'll get more into that later. As you may know, the Ann Arbor community is a very camp-rich environment. There's a camp on every corner in the summer, it seems like, and we're a big presence among camps. But others, the city, the county, Community Action Network, some of our partners also offer camps. As of Monday, we have 3,152 registrations for our camps, and that means that about 70% of our camps are filled, and that also means that about 30% of our camp openings are open. So visiting AA Rec and Ed online, you can see what's still available. All right, moving right along. Okay, so now we're just going to dive into a little journey from the three-year-olds all the way through the high schoolers. What is available for them this summer for Rec and Ed, summer camps, summer camp programs? So starting with our very youngest children, we have camps for three- to five-and-a-half-year-olds. They're all half-day because they're talking about timing, talking about intensity. Half-day is just right for this age group. And as you can see from a lot of the pictures that are here, our camps cover a variety of things to do, and you know, dancing, science, a lot of early literacy support, music. We have a Spanish camp, a lot of creative play, because that's what three- to five-year-olds want to be doing is creative play. Our camps also involve outdoor time and free choice time as well, to be age-appropriate. All right. And then we come to our decades-long Safety Town program, and this is actually called a program, not a camp, because it has an educational focus and educational goals for our youngest students, for our rising young fives, kinders, and first graders. for our youngest students. For our rising young fives, kinders, and first graders, we offer a week-long, half-day camp experience or program experience that involves learning all sorts of things about how to say "stay safe" in traffic, with fire, if there's a fire situation, with electricity, all different kinds of safety. The other thing that Safety Town does for the 600 to 700 young students who come every year is it is often their first time setting foot in an AAPS elementary building. So they come in, they are part of a class, they have a teacher, they have other adult helpers in the classroom, they move around the school as a group, and these students then come equipped with some experience being in an elementary school, which I think is quite helpful for many of them. And also, their parents get used to saying goodbye to them at the door. Yeah, that's sometimes the hardest part. Okay, so let's move on now to our older students, our camps for five- to 14-year-olds. This is really the bulk of the RECKON Ed camp program. We divide them into two areas. There's enrichment camps and sport camps. So the enrichment camps are often full-day, and full-day for us is 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., but we do offer aftercare till 5:30 at our main enrichment site. You know, there's a huge variety of camp themes, which I'm going to show you in a minute. But throughout all the camps, there are hands-on activities, projects in small groups, projects in large groups, lots of time. There's usually a theme and tons of activities around that theme. Again, full and half-day, and this is where we offer aftercare for people who need it. As you all know, Ann Arbor is a very sporty town, so we have two different opportunities for families and students. First, multi-sport experience, which is just fun. It's A2 Sports. This is a very popular camp program, and they play different sports and outdoor games that are team-building. There's a real kind of social-emotional component to that as well. And we have individual sport camps. And since it's Ann Arbor, and people are into all different stuff, right, we offer fencing camps, rowing camp, in addition to the kind of tried-and-true basketball, soccer, all kinds of stuff. So some of those camps for the older students are actually fundraisers by our high school athletic booster clubs. All right, so let's just look at some pictures of cute kids doing cute things. The enrichment camps in particular are really a place where children can try stuff, and they can be silly in a safe environment and try different things. Try chess, try acting. We have a strong performing arts series of camps. Try doing things with their favorite book series, like Harry Potter. All kinds of ways to do activities, make friends, and be in a safe environment, having fun. And by the way, the young boy on the bottom left is holding a big worm, just in case you're wondering. All right, so our sport camps similarly are a place to be active. We're hoping that kids really make friends. And what we see year after year is that, or what we hear about is that elementary students get to middle school and then get to high school, and people look familiar. It's because they were friends for a week at a RECKON Ed camp, and they may not have seen each other since, but they have that connection. And kids who come back for our camps year after year really can feel connected when they move up in the school district. All right, I think we're in our 13th year of our high school volunteer program, and this is something that is such a wonderful overall enhancement to the program. We have over 100 volunteers each summer. They come from all of our AAPS schools. So sometimes some awkward moments in the training as they're meeting each other, it's very cute. But they're dedicated to really supporting students have the best camp experience that they can. Typically, we have one or two per camp. We have more at Safety Town. We ask that they commit to at least two weeks of volunteering. Some do a lot more. We provide training to them. And in the next slide, I will provide the direct link to applying to the high school volunteer program. If you visit a camp and you see older-looking kids in green shirts, sometimes they're hard to tell because they're actually doing the stuff. They're doing the camp stuff and helping their younger peers do different activities. Anyway, so our deadline for applying is May 5th. Spread the word. All right, so how do we go about making summer camp as accessible as possible? We have two main ways that we do that. First, we know that the cost of camp can be a barrier for a lot of families. So our RECKON Ed Scholarship Program covers camps. And just a reminder, this whole program is self-funded. It's all through fees. We don't have like this giant pot of gold scholarship money. We work our budget so that we can do fee waivers for families. So any AAPS family who receives free and reduced lunch automatically qualifies. It's a very easy application. Currently, we have 335 families who are part of the scholarship program, and we do direct outreach to them and say, hey, remember, it's summer camp time. Make sure you register your student. What we do actually to make sure there is space for our students coming from lower-income families is that we actually hold spots across every single camp. We hold spots for our scholarship recipients, because when summer camp registration opens, it can be a little bit of a feeding frenzy. On our first day, a couple weeks ago, we opened registrations, we had 2,800 people register that day. And we know that's like this, woo! So we want to make sure that our scholarship families don't get left out. So we have saved spots for them, and we let them know. The other way that we try to make our camps as accessible as possible is by providing accommodations for students with special needs. And the way that happens is that during the registration process, parents fill out a special needs planning form. We engage in a collaborative process with the parents and make different types of accommodations, which can be things like making sure that we have the daily agenda posted very clearly, that we have time and space for a little quiet time. But we also know that our camps are very busy and sometimes noisy places. So some of our camps are very active. There's a lot of transitions between activities. You know, our campers need to be able to kind of move through the day. And so we want to also help parents pick camps that'll work for their kids. We want every student to have a really successful experience and have a smile at the end of the day. And if it's too noisy, too much activity, too many kids, we want to make sure that they're considering that and understanding what is going to be involved for their kid. We do, I think we're probably the only camp program in town that does this. I don't know. I don't want to say. I could be wrong. But we do work with our Office of Special Education to support students to successfully be at camp who have a one-on-one pair approach during the school year. And every summer, last summer, we had between 15 and 20 students who had a TA with them the entire camp, the entire week of camp. I want to point out that RECKON Ed pays for that out of our budget. It is not coming out of the OSE budget. And we're really glad that we can provide that opportunity for a student to engage in summer camp, because that can be really transforming. So we often have students sign up for multiple weeks. When we can, we try to get the exact TA they have during the school year, but sometimes that's not possible. And it really depends on if TAs are willing to work during the summer. So that's an effort that has been years-long in really trying to help students enjoy camp in that way. Oh, and the other thing I forgot to mention about scholarships is that at camp, nobody knows which students have a scholarship. The counselors don't know. Nobody knows. So it's just everybody's together having a good time. Wanted to make sure you knew that that is private information. All right, so if that's not enough, if you want to do even more fun stuff this summer, we have more programs going on. Just wanted to touch on these really fast. We have youth sports leagues coming up. Registration comes up soon, T-ball, baseball, softball, and we also have a high school volleyball program. Lots of youth classes for kids who don't do camp or whatever they want to do. We have weekly enrichment instructional sports classes. And then for adults, we also have sports and classes available. So with that, in closing, I just thank you for your time and attention, and let's just get through these next nine weeks so we can get to summer and have some fun. Thank you.